Good evening. We are calling the August 5th regular Town Council meeting agenda to order. Role call, Town Clerk, Melendez, would you like to do the role call?
Yes. Counselor Bordaloon?
I'm here.
Good.
Here.
Jones?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Pacino?
Here.
Russ?
Here.
And Mayor Franco?
I am here. Thank you. Do not conduct salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do not have any recognition awards and memorials this evening, nor public hearings, so we were going to go on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from the citizens to address the council. Please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to two minutes or less, and citizens should, if possibly, submit written comments. The total time allotted for this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. In order to preserve the order of the meeting as referenced in Rule 5H of the Rules and Procedures to Govern the 34th Town Council, to speak in person during this portion of the meeting, people were to sign up at the meeting before the call to order. You may also register to speak in person in advance by email at council@groton-ct.gov, no later than 4:00 PM on the day before the meeting.
Point of information?
Your question.
So, for me, I'm just, I have a question. I was not aware that we were changing the speaking time and putting a restraint to the amount of time, which we've never done in the past, saying, like, we, if you change it from the normal speaking time, you've, you didn't say there was a limit to 30 minutes total. So I'm just curious where all this come from?
It's in Rule 5H of our rules.
It's not something we've ever used in any other public comments.
It is in Rule 5H. Thank you. So Town, the Town, I have a comment I would like to make before we begin citizens' comments. I'd like to clarify certain facts to facilitate the timely consideration and order of this meeting and the Town Council's agenda items of tonight's scheduled town business. First, Sergeant Brian Fahey is not and never has been employed by the Town of Groton. He is a sergeant with the Connecticut State Police. Similarly, any officers or attorneys assigned to the New London Superior Court are State of Connecticut employees who work with the Connecticut Judicial Branch, and not for the Town of Groton or its police department. The Town of Groton, including the Town Council, Town Manager, Police Chief, or any other Town employee, does not have jurisdiction or authority to make decisions regarding additional criminal charges related to the events of July 11th. At this time, this remains an active investigation, and any decisions on criminal charges as a result of that incident rests solely with the State Prosecutor's Office. We will now take citizens' comments. First up is Sean Paul Reyes. It is now 6:35. We are beginning public comment.
So you guys have no authority over Sergeant Brian Fahey, former Sergeant Brian Fahey, but you have plenty of authority, your police department has plenty of authority, to level baseless felonious charges against myself and my cameraman? That's, that's good to, it's good to know. My name is Sean Paul Reyes. I'm an independent journalist and the founder of Long Island Audit. I am, most importantly, a citizen who cares deeply about accountability and public trust in law enforcement. On July 11th, 2025, something happened here that should alarm every single person who believes in justice. A Connecticut State Police Sergeant, Brian Fahey, brandished a firearm, physically assaulted me, and even spat in my face while I was engaged in a constitutionally protected activity, asking questions about suspected overtime fraud, a matter of clear public concern. Let me be very clear, I was 150 feet away from his door on my way out when this armed lunatic stormed out of his house with a gun in one hand, a phone in the other, and rage in his voice. He got in my face, bumped into me, threatened me, pointed his weapon near me, and then spit directly in my face and mouth, all while falsely claiming to 911 that I threatened to kill him, which is a crime for anybody else. This wasn't law enforcement, this was lawless under the color of authority. What happened next? The Groton Police Department, I like how mayor, you like to try and single yourself out, you know, we're not in charge of the Connecticut State Police or New London Judicial District, but what happened next? Your police department arrived, and instead of arresting the aggressor, the person who committed felonies, they arrested me and my cameraman on baseless charges of felony voyeurism, criminal trespass, and breach of the peace. My bond, which was set by your police department, was originally set at $10,000, but on body camera, they told me they were receiving calls from high up. Was it you? Was it you? Who were the calls from high up? Was it the police chief who worked for the Connecticut State Police for 22 years? They received calls from high up, and they said, whoa, now your bond is $75,000.
Two minutes.
$75,000.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Mr. Reyes, you didn't, you did not announce your address.
Accountability is an optional.
Thank you.
And it is your public duty as public servants to do the right thing.
Your time has, you're out of order.
Because the people of Groton, the people of Connecticut, and the people of this country deserve better.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
You're cowards for limiting it to two minutes.
You didn't, you didn't list your address. Mr. Reyes, you did not list your address. Mr. Reyes, you did not list your address. Mr. Burt, is a address required to be able to speak? Thank you. Up next is Leroy Truth. If we do not, if we do not have order within the chamber, I do have the authority to clear the chamber. Thank you. Leroy Truth.
I'm discussing by your Mayor Franco.
Your name?
I am Leroy Truth of Leroy Truth Investigations on YouTube. Please subscribe to me now. Good evening, everyone. Let me just say, I get it. I totally understand why Connecticut State Trooper Sergeant Brian Fahey would spit directly into the mouth of peaceful journalist Sean of Long Island Audit. I mean, Sean had the unmitigated gall, the unspeakable audacity to walk, not run. You can look up, Mayor Franco, give a little respect here, Sean had the audacity to walk, not run, not teleport, not evaporate at 186,000 miles per second off Fahey's property after being told to leave. I mean, come on, Sean. What were you thinking? Everyone knows when a Connecticut State Trooper with an ego the size of his government pension says, get off my lawn, you're supposed to dematerialize like you're in a Marvel movie. And the way Sean dared to stand there with a camera, not a gun, not a grenade, but a cannon, or a Sony, or an iPhone, or whatever those damn peaceful auditors use these days, he might as well have launched a nuke, right? The horror, the tragedy, the nerve. But seriously, let's flip the script, because that's what this moment demands. Sergeant Brian Fahey is not a hero. He is not a protector. He is a government-issued goon with a badge and a bubbling psychological breakdown. He didn't have to come out of his house. He wasn't under threat. He wasn't provoked. He chose to close the distance. And you try to get away from responsibility. The reason that this shite show happened, number one, Brian Fahey spitting into the mouth of Sean Long Island Audit, number two, your police, the Groton Police, arresting, mind-blowingly arresting, an innocent journalist and an innocent cameraman. Who gave that order? Mayor Franco? Who gave that order? That's why we're here. Don't blame this man. He's a journalist. He's been doing what journalists have done for generations, try to get the truth, and you can't handle the truth. What do you have to say?
Up next. Vinnie is up next.
What you tried to do with the, the time, I'm not giving my name.
I'm sorry, your name?
You don't deserve my name. You don't deserve an address. Thank you. All right. What you did with the time, what you've never done before, limiting this, this public speaking time to two minutes, is terrible. I commend you for bringing that point up, a rule that's never been used. This is all to silence we, the people. Us. We want a voice, but now you've limited our voice. You've limited the speaking time just to 30 minutes. 30 minutes. You see how many people are here? You don't want to hear us. That's why you limited the time. All right, so I'm here today because of what happened to Sean Paul Reyes in your town. He was arrested for peacefully filming and asking questions, something protected by the First Amendment. At the same time, a police officer allegedly spit on him, pulled a gun, and was not charged. That's not fair. That's a double standard. Groton now has a choice. Will you stand up for fairness? I don't think you will. I definitely don't think you will. You just want to hide it under the fucking rug. Truth and the rights of the people, or will you protect the bad behavior by staying silent? I bet you will. I bet you will. Now, I ask you to take this seriously, look into what happened, be open and public, and make sure this doesn't happen again. I would like the other council members to stand up and speak up, because this mayor clearly won't. Please. This is, this is crazy.
Up next is Full Court Press.
Good evening. To my fellow freedom enforcers who showed up tonight in the name of accountability, and to those, men and women in uniforms, still confused about who the criminal was in Long Island Audit video, spoiler alert, it wasn't the guys with the camera. My name is Full Court Press, and tonight I've got a humble request. Arrest me. I see how you operate, and I don't want to miss my turn. In Groton, you don't need to break the law to be arrested, you just need to document someone else breaking it. Let's walk through it, slowly, for those still taking notes in denial. A journalist, Long Island Audit, knocks on a public official's door, leaves when asked, calm and respectful, then bursts out of the house, little Brian Fahey, off-duty, armed, enraged, follows the man toward the street, spits in his face, gun on his hip, badge in his mouth, ego on full auto. What does Groton PD do? Do they arrest the armed man who just committed assault? The one shouting, I'm a goddamn Connecticut State Trooper, like it's a spell against accountability? Nope. You arrest the guy asking questions. And for extra laughs, you arrest the cameraman too. Because apparently in Groton, the real threat isn't the guy with the gun, it's the guy with the tripod. If irony were a crime, you'd be doing life without parole. Let's talk law. Connecticut General State Statute 53A 61, spitting is assault. Physical injury includes pain or impairment of condition, saliva counts. That's not just gross, that's criminal, and the only people denying it are the ones protecting little Brian Fahey. What he did wasn't disgusting, it was a crime committed in public, on camera, under color of authority. And your response? Cowardice, corruption, collusion. So here I am, clean record, voice steady, camera ready, and I dare you to make your next mistake. So go ahead, arrest me. Throw me in a cruiser, I'll livestream it, narrate it in real time, and by the time the ink dries on your report, half the country will know your names, and none of them will spell hero.
Thank you. Up next is John Felix.
Who's up next?
John Felix.
Hi, John Felix, Transparency, Accountability Coalition. You could try to say you don't have jurisdiction. You do have jurisdiction over the Groton PD. They did make a false arrest against Sean Paul. He's not the criminal. He's the victim of a Connecticut State Trooper. And you're saying you're not protecting him, but your PD did protect him, and you're trying to deflect the blame onto other people. You have jurisdiction over the people who made the false arrest, and your constituents are going to have to pay for it. You understand that, right? You don't just get to say, oh, it's not me, oh, it's not me. It is you. You are in charge of them. I flew all the way up from Florida to come here to talk directly to you. What's wrong with you? And now you're taking three minutes away from me? You don't think that's just going to arrange us more? How would you like us almost spit in your mouth? Would you like that? What if they did it to your child? What would you do then? Would you have your husband beat somebody up? Is that how you operate? The fuck is wrong with you? You have jurisdiction over the Groton PD. The Groton PD fucking did this. And now I'm maliciously prosecuting him, and your fucking constituents are going to have to fucking pay for it. Feel good about yourself? You're going to take some responsibility or not? If you fucking vote for this dumbass lady ever again, you get what you fucking deserve, stupid ass.
Up next, we, the people news.
Is this Groton, Connecticut, or is this rotten, Connecticut? Because right now, what I'm seeing is a whole bunch of rotteness. Good evening, council members, mayor, and fellow Americans. I'm not here tonight to cause a scene. I'm here because the line has been crossed, and that line was spit on, stomped on, and violated by a disgraced and now retired Connecticut State Trooper Sergeant Fahey. Last month, Sean Paul Reyes of Long Island Audit, a journalist, a First Amendment auditor, a man holding a camera, was assaulted, spit on, cursed at, by that nasty, wretched, vile animal. Not in a back alley, not during a riot, but in broad daylight, as he was engaged in his duties as a journalist and exercising the rights guaranteed under the Constitution. And what happened next? Nothing. No arrest, no suspension, no accountability. Except for this man. He was arrested. His cameraman was arrested. Connecticut sent a, sent a clear message, the same message we've seen with Mississippi, with me, the same message out of New Jersey with Leroy Truth, that journalism is a threat, that transparency must be punished, that cops can commit crimes on camera and walk away clean. But this is not how it's supposed to be. We have three branches of government for a reason. When the courts won't act, when the legislature stays silent, the executive branch, this town, this city council, this mayor, you have the power to say enough is enough. You don't work for the state police. You don't answer to bad cops. You answer to the people. And the people are watching.
Thank you.
The nation is watching.
Thank you.
And the world is watching to see if Groton has a spine.
Your time has expired. Up next is the Long Island Audit.
So ask resolution to condemn this act of violence. Defend the First Amendment.
Thank you.
Because if we don't stand up for our rights, we lose.
You're out of order.
And once they're gone, they don't come back without a fight.
We're going to take a recess now. Can we stop? We're going to take a recess. If this continues, if people continue to go over their time, which is fair to all who would like to speak, we will recess the meeting until, and then come back. Up next, it says the Long Island Audit. No, you can only speak once. Up next is James D. Up next is James D.
I'll take the Long Island Audit.
James D.
I had no intention to come up here and speak, but I wanted to show support for Sean. What I saw was despicable. I'm going to look at the police officer in here, because that's what I care about. Your department arrested this man? You should be ashamed of yourself. Your whole department should be ashamed of yourself. Okay? You guys are doing the wrong thing to the wrong people. Crime was committed, and you covered it up because the guy's a state trooper? What would your mom think? What would your parents think? Your kids? Do they know what happened? Did you go home and say, hey, our department arrested this man? Think about the future, the children, everyone. This is the example you and your department are setting. And mayor, you're in this as well. This is your department. You oversee them. Get them in fucking order. I mean, really, enough's enough. Long Island Audit.
Up next is James D.
Hello. In a society, justice must stand as impartial pillar that upholds fairness, equity, and the rule of law. When justice is divided into tiers, where some individuals receive preferential treatment based on wealth, status, or power, it undermines the very essence of what it means to be a free society. A tiered justice system not only breeds inequality, it also fosters resentment and distrust. As Thomas Jefferson once warned, laws and institutions must go hand in hand with progress of the human mind. For this progress to be genuine, it requires a justice system that is blind to power and privilege. When justice becomes a tool for the elite, those who are disadvantaged feel the system is rigged against them, diminishes the trust necessary for a functioning free society. Alexander Hamilton, one of our nation's most influential founders, also cautioned that the first duty of a society is justice. But when justice is doled out unevenly, when some individuals face harsher sentences than others for the same crime, or are completely not held accountable for their crime, it erodes the societal contracts. Citizens begin to question whether the laws are truly just, which most are not, or whether they exist simply to protect the powerful. Our constitution was written by James Madison, was founded on, as written by James Madison, was founded on the idea that all men are created equal, all, all of us citizens are created equal. And that equality before the law should be non-negotiable. If we allow any form of hierarchy in our justice system, we risk creating a society where the law becomes a tool of oppression rather than a shield of freedom. And we're seeing that every day. We saw it with Long Island Audit. We see it all over the country every day, where government officials and police officers are not held accountable for their bad actions. And it falls back, what they've said earlier today, or this evening, it falls back on the people of this town. They're going to, you're going to get sued, and you're going to have to pay, and they're going to have to pay.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Good evening, council. Lauren Gothier, 31 Boats and Road. If I knew I could use the F-word, I certainly would have used it way before now, but, and anyways, I'll keep my comments truncated. I'm here to speak about Pleasant Valley and the preferred developer that's on your agenda again tonight for some reason. There's already been plenty of arguments made on why Pleasant Valley is the most appropriate spot for District Four to receive a recreation facility, including parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. But I want to specifically focus on the two arguments that have been made to turn Pleasant Valley into a high-density housing complex instead. Those two arguments being that there aren't many other areas in town for housing to go. This is incorrect. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on rezoning the IM District, which is that area by the Pequot Emergency Department, and Mystic Marriott, where that controversial data center was supposed to go. Recently, we've rezoned that so that multifamily housing can be built there. That's a large area that's now open to those types of developments. In addition, I know Groton City has been working towards rezoning to allow for housing on Bridge Street, to advantageously use the topography there to add more density. So those are just two quick examples. But to say that these 300 apartments can't go anywhere else is incorrect. And then the other argument being made that we have to put these schools back on the tax rolls seems to only apply to the western side of town, where the, this town, the Town of Groton, derives our identity as the submarine capital of the world. These high-density apartments at these schools are apparently only applicable to the city of Groton and District Four, but not S.B. Butler or Claude Chester. And I feel like if you're going to discriminate against this side of town, at least be consistent in your logic. So I've been through, like, the five stages of grief on this project, and with you, you councilors, I just won't accept it. I think that you guys can and should understand the opportunity cost here, and how deeply this will affect our community. Please don't vote for this developer.
Thank you. Up next is Michael Boucher.
I think you said my name, but I can't hear you.
Boucher.
That's great. Thank you.
Mike Boucher, 16 Hillside Avenue. The Community Investment Fund is a State Department-grant program to promote economic and community development. At a COW meeting, the agenda package listed three legitimate projects for CIF, Route 117, Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley School, and the athletic fields for $10 million. Without any notice before the meeting, a very questionable City of Groton seawall application appeared during the CIF portion of the COW meeting. The City of Groton seawall improvement for, was for $9.8 million. Director Reinhart provided very little information and simply stated that legend and other stuff were hit and nothing much else. Council Bordaloon was prevented from gaining any information about the seawall, and thus prevented from looking after the best interest of our Groton neighborhoods and advocating for our athletic fields. A motion was made and passed to support the seawall cost overruns for $9.8 million instead of athletic fields. Portia was the only council who stood up and supported our neighborhood athletic fields and refused to support the bailout of the City of Groton seawall debacle. The Town Council owes the Groton community and Council Bordaloon apology for not allowing discussion on the seawall debacle. Reiner's comments on the failed seawall project were woefully incomplete and misleading. I am concerned about Franco's vote in the matter, which resulted in no funding for Groton Heights, considering all the controversy she is already involved in in Groton Heights School. I am concerned with Rusk's vote in supporting the City of Groton with a $9.8 million bailout, and now she could become the paid mayor of the City of Groton. I challenge the town staff and Town Council to release any engineering studies stating that the seawall was in any danger of failing, to provide all communications with the City of Groton in this state concerning the funding of the seawall and the county attorney's opinion on the definition of seawall and highway to the public. Please meet with BL companies and ask about the RFP for the seawall, which did not guarantee the locations of infrastructure, or ask why the design of the seawall, which required bedrock to be anchored.
Thank you.
Only had three test drillings for 350 feet.
Your time has expired.
And one of those drillings failed to find any bedrock. The city failed miserably with their application, and you need to know more.
Up next is Michael Fontaine.
Good evening, council. I've been a Groton resident for almost five years, formerly of Norwich. I actually had the distinction of having Chief Savaro, Chief Fazaro, be my neighbor for three doors down, so I know him very well from the first 10 years of my life, so much so that the chief of Norwich, his father, attended both of my family's funerals. What I saw in July, what the police department did to this man, falsely arresting him, really concerned me. This is the first time I ever addressed a public setting like this, and I'm afraid that he's going to sue the town, and the taxpayers are going to have to bear the burden of this. So I'm just wondering what the town's going to do about this.
Up next is John Goodrich.
They're going to limit your speech to two minutes. That's what they're going to do.
Hi, John Goodrich, up next.
Yeah, I got the message, John Goodrich was not going to make it tonight, so that, he said to take his turn for him. My name is Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board of Education and spouse to Counselor Bordaloon. I just wanted to speak, first off, just, I agree with Gothier and Boucher as far as the topics of their conversation. I don't want to take my time on that, since it's limited. I just wanted to take the opportunity to correct the record. Mayor Franco visited the Board of Ed last week and discussed some matters with the FOI case that was recently decided. I filed a complaint last year in regards to a situation that occurred July 9th, where Counselor Rusk made an inappropriate motion to require an apology for me being verbally abusive to the town attorney and also disrupting a previous meeting. This was found. Mayor Franco came to the Board of Ed and discussed findings. The findings actually is an interesting interpretation, but I will submit these to the record. There's a few articles here from the press, and also the actual finding. I got the final decision in the mail last week, so there has been no appeal. It is a settled matter. I highlighted the section that is most pertinent. Paragraph 12 is a bit of a setup, but basically saying, like, at the time, Counselor Rusk interrupted auditor's presentation to financial, for the unfinancial report, moved for a formal apology. The complainant was sitting quietly at the desk. So there was no disruption in the July 9th meeting to justify the Roberts Rules exemption. But moreover, the finding was that it was inappropriate motion, and there is no two minutes. there.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Yes.
Up next, on our agenda, will be the consent calendar. Council Bordelain, would you like to take the consent calendar?
I'm sorry? Yes, Council Bordelain.
Council Parker?
Yes, Council Bordelain.
Oh, I apologize. Council Parker, I apologize.
Make a resolution, make a, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2025-673, the May 27, 2025 special meeting minutes. Oh, we're moving the whole thing. Consent, I'm, move the following, 2025-673, May 27, 2025 special meeting minutes. The following meeting minutes, July 1st, July 8th, and July 22nd, as well as the special trust fund contributions. I still move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Good. Anybody have any corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
That passes eight to zero to one, with Bordelain abstaining. Up next, communication reports, other than committee reports.
I guess we're gonna have to use all the members.
Up first is the Town Council. And Councilor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share this evening?
No.
All right, Council Bordelain.
Thank you. I just want to say that I did receive a ton of phone calls from people regarding the police matter from all around the state, all around the country, really. Unfortunately, I'm, you know, as, for my statement is, I was not at the last meeting, I was virtual due to an illness. I, what I have to say is basically, the council oversees the town manager. We hire or fire the town manager, and the town manager oversees our town staff. So, I believe in due process. I'm fact-finding in all the situation. Obviously, my decision or my feeling on it wouldn't change anything, but I, I feel everyone has a right to their opinion and their voice. And so, I thank people for who have reached out, tons of emails that have come in. Again, I don't know where I stand on all of this until, but I think due process has to happen, and from there, but I think for both sides of the party, due process is only the right thing. So, that's what I say to that. With that, also regarding the Board of Ed matter and the FOI regarding my husband, I am personally tired of the attacks on my family, and I personally feel the comments were not needed after a finding was withheld by the ruling. And as it says up here, once a ruling has been final, let it, let it lay. And to go up there and attack at a Town, a Board of Ed meeting, and watching that was just, to me, embarrassing and very frustrating. Also, tonight, we have changed the minutes to our meetings before, if it's been a big crowd, much larger than this, and it usually has gone to three minutes. But also, in fact, they've never put a time limit on it. So, we have changed the time, but this is the first time I've ever seen it, where they said, "Not only is there a time limit, but we're gonna make a time limit, meaning we won't exceed 30 minutes." We've stood here for hours under public comments in the past. This thing has never been in the comment section of our agenda since I've been on here. We've changed the minutes, but never, never have I ever seen it, where we've then said, "We're only gonna keep it to 30 minutes." And we've had larger crowds than this. So, again, I'm not saying I don't agree with the swearing that occurred here tonight, as a person who tries my hardest itself, because children may watch this video, so I don't agree with that. But I feel everyone has a right to voice their opinion and speak up, and let due process happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can we have order in the galley? Otherwise, we're gonna take a recess, please.
Why is such a cavalry recess?
Recession? All right, we're gonna take a recess. We're gonna come back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:12. We are back from recess. Up next, Council Pacino, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything I need to share today. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you to the Groton Beautification Committee for inviting me out on Saturday. It was a great time. If you have one hour or two to spare a month, please give the Groton Beautification Committee a call. They are trying to do a lot on very few people, very few volunteers. They can be reached via Facebook or on the Town website. Their next meeting is scheduled for August 7th. It is always the first Thursday of the month at 6:30 in the Town Hall Annex, so here. So, please come on out and support the Groton Beautification Committee. I want to say congratulations to the city for their 40th City Day. It went very, very well. I was there with Council Parker, Council Pacino, Council Good. If I missed somebody, I apologize. And I, I am gonna address what Mr. Thomas said. I think he stepped out of the room, but I may have made a parliamentary error, but I will never condone somebody coming to a meeting and talking over people, talking over the mayor in this situation, which is why I asked him for an apology. It does not need to come up again. It is what it is. He made his choice, and I did ask him for an apology. He chose not to do it. So, yes, my error was in parliamentary procedure, but it was not in asking for the apology. So, hopefully that is done, since it is from a year ago. So, anytime you'd like to apologize, feel free.
Council Bordelain, it's inappropriate.
I just think that's inappropriate.
Thank you. I think it's inappropriate. You do not have the floor.
I just think it was inappropriate.
You're out of order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to relay something we thanked before, but I'm gonna just do it again, because I've had some residents reach out about how nice they like the new pickleball courts at Thrive 55. They're getting a lot of use, and people are thrilled that they're there. And I just want to, again, thank the Parks and Rec, and also the efforts that the council did on bringing those forward. So, just a big thank you, and the residents are enjoying it.
Thank you. Council McBride.
Thank you. Received lots of emails and phone calls, or more emails, regarding the police matter that's been discussed this evening. And the only thing I want to reiterate, similar to what Council Bordelain mentioned, is that my understanding of this council's roles and responsibilities are to ensure the town manager is performing his job, and we hire him or her as needed, and that it's his role and responsibility to oversee all the employees and the department head. So, it's not this council's role to be involved in those matters, and I think that information should be clear to the public. And John Burt, if you're able to, on your report, if you can potentially, you know, kind of explain that situation, because I think the perception is that this council can act in a manner that I don't believe it has the ability to do so, and I think the public should be aware of what our capabilities are, and what our roles are versus what some in public opinion have. So, that's all. Thank you.
Council Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended Groton City Night. It was a lot of fun. They moved it over and broadened it out a lot a bit, a lot. I was there with some kids, and they all had a great time. Also, worked with the Beautification Committee this weekend. Like Council Russ says, it only takes about an hour or two a month, and it really, really does a lot for the town, to have people all volunteer to keep it clean and make it more beautiful. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Council Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The charter does say what the Town Council can do, what the town manager does. Charter is online for everyone to read, and I suggest everyone brush up on it. As online comment on that. Part two is, there is a process, and we are not involved in it. It is in the hands of the State of Connecticut Department, so that's part two. There will be a pop-up United Way Mobile Food Pantry on August 11th from 4:30 to 5:30. You do have to bring your own bags, and it's gonna be at Thrive 55. I attended United Way Food, Mobile Food Pantry, which we do once a month with Council Good and Council Rusk, as well as I attended the Tommy Toy Fund that was held at Outer Lights. That was a great turnout. And I want to send my sincere condolences, and, for two people that I've met and know. Former Mayor Rita Schmidt and Ms. Marjorie Brooks. Wonderful women, and they will be deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like to make it clear to my community that when I go and speak at the Board of Ed during citizen's comments, I can speak as a citizen, just as though I see other people that come here and speak as citizens, although they are elected officials on other boards, as well as fellow Town councilors do as well on numerous occasions. And I don't think we've ever discussed that here as a body. I would like to also notify Mr. Burt that prior to the meeting starting, Council Rusk did have spit on her seat. So, I know we have recordings in these rooms, so if it would be possible to look at these recordings to see how this played out, it's very inappropriate. And I will say that the amount of time that we are doing as speakers is in our rules. And if you look at other towns and cities, they also have time limits. They also have the amount of time that citizen comments can last. I know for just facts, because I've gone and spoken at one, is at Norwich. They only allow, I believe it's 30 minutes. So, this is not unusual. It happens broadly across the state. This is nothing unusual. And actually, I would just want the council to know that I do plan to keep this in play for the remainder of the term that I am the mayor. Also, I have, I have comments to say here that I am probably gonna use over my time limit, but I would ask for the grace of this council. Groton's former mayor, Rita Schmidt, has passed away, and I would like to take this time to reflect on Rita Schmidt. A beautiful person, a leader, as well as Groton's champion. I met Rita when we ran for office in 2017. She was kind to me, and that is all I really knew of her at the time, just a really nice lady. She didn't talk about her accolades or brag about her accomplishments. She was just Rita. During this time, Rita had an injury on her foot and was unable to knock doors during the campaign. Not to worry, endorsed candidates typically promote the team when knocking doors. We handed out campaign cards with her name and photo, along with the whole team on it. And as I knocked doors, I realized that many people would comment. the whole team on it. And as I knocked doors, I realized that many people would comment, "Oh, Rita's running. How nice." After months of knocking doors, Election Day finally arrived, and votes were tallied, Rita came in fourth, and I came in fifth. Being new to a local elections, I was a little surprised that Rita had done so well. I asked someone who had been in local politics for a long time, "How did Rita get so many votes when she didn't knock a single door?" I was out there just about every day after work, on weekends, tired and sweaty, knocking doors all over the community. The response I received was, "Oh, Rita is very well-known and extremely respected all around Groton." And I learned just how true that was. Councilor Parker and I had the honor to serve with Rita on that council. Rita was a Groton icon, who was truly a wonderful person and an inspiration. Not only did she serve Groton well as a former mayor and as a town councillor, she was also a leader and a champion of promoting tourism statewide. Rita was also a mentor to so many. She inspired numerous Democratic women to get involved. Rita was a staunch Democrat, believed in respecting all. She was the essence of all that is good in our local community. She modeled all the good qualities of what an elected official should be. She was respectful, kind, thoughtful. She conducted herself with dignity, integrity, grace, and I cannot recall a time she had a bad word to say about anyone, nor anyone about her. She was just a genuinely good person that we all should strive to emulate. Rita will be missed, though her legacy will live on in those she impacted. I send heartfelt condolences to her family. Now let's all take a moment to remember Rita and to reflect on all the good that she embodied with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Rest in peace, in eternal peace, Rita. All right, up next, we have Clerk of the Council. Councilor Melendez?
Yes, nothing to report.
Thank you. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
Point of information.
Your question.
I have a question for the clerk. Put my hand up.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
I just wanted to know if she could just report on, at this point in time, is there any primaries with the upcoming election? And if there is, could you just state the primary dates or anything that we should know regarding elections?
For the town, at the moment, there are no primaries. And if there would be a primary, the election, September 9th.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Parker?
Clerk Melendez?
Yes.
Is there a specific date that they have to put their paperwork in for primaring?
Tomorrow is the deadline at 4:00 P.M.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting. Clerk Melendez?
Okay. Yes. The next RTM meeting is August 13 at 7:00 P.M. at Thrive 55. Currently, the vacancies, District 1 has one Democratic seat, District 3 has one minority seat, and District 4 has two minority seats and one Democratic seat. That's all, the vacancies for the RTM at the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town Manager Burt?
Good evening. A few items. First, I also want to acknowledge Rita Schmidt. She was an excellent town councillor and a joy to work with, and always on point and very reasonable. District 4 parks, open space. We had a good meeting with the Board of Ed, myself, Parks and Market Director Mark Berry, as well as three councillors came along to provide comment, Pacino, Good, and Rusk, to talk about Mary Morrison, that backspace for potential park. The Board of Ed was very gracious and receptive to the idea. And Board Member Dean Antipas, who is an attorney, is working on a draft MOU. So I was waiting to see that for the next steps. Legally notifying you'll be seeing something that a mosquito in town did test positive for West Nile virus. So everyone be careful mosquitoes. Hopefully that's going to be the only one. Public Works, Sutton Park's work is out to bid for the bulk of the work that's going to be going on there. August 21st is the bid opening. Painting of the aquatic plains park restrooms wrapped up this week. Replacement of every window at Human Services was completed last week. The roof replacement for the Gulf Force maintenance building was completed. The next part is they're now starting to work on the siding replacement. They regraded and repaved Cedar Road to better redirect rainfall. It was pooling or going towards a property, so they're trying to redirect it towards a swale there. We're going to be doing some work, well, I'll be coming to the council most likely for potential funding to do some work on probate court. You might recall, there's been an ongoing, long-term issue with safety there. The hope is that they would move eventually into the former Fitch Middle. I think even in best case, they're less than many years away. So Chief Fisaro, myself, Greg Hanover, and a couple others met with probate courts just to go through ideas. So we have some ideas. Greg Hanover has directed an engineer to work on these ideas, to see what the cost would be, are they feasible, et cetera. So I'll be probably coming back to the council to talk about that at some point. Let's see, bids came in for the Groton ambulance, door repairs and painting. They did come within budget, so that was good news. Nowadays, you don't always know if they're going to come into budget. And we're also just, we had 18 bidders on our Public Works garage, which is fantastic, and many under budget. So that was also good news. So things are going pretty good on bidding right this second. We're going to be painting Jebus Smith House and the carriage house in the next week or so. We've been doing a variety of work there, trying to get it, you know, looking nice there. And then we're going to be doing work soon on the Paquonic Road Village Lane intersection stoplight. And just so you know, there'll be in-ground and paving work done first, but there's a 22-week lead time for the span poles. That's why you're seeing some DOT work also with just concrete out there. They're waiting on poles. So just a long lead time. Shennick House, the golf course, the point-of-sale software, almost set to go. They're just having an issue with the credit card reader. So Mark Berry is trying to get the vendor to come resolve that. So we're close. There's always going to be heckups. And then, yes, it was mentioned, Town Council. I'm the only employee that reports to the Town Council per the Town Charter. All of their employees report to myself, generally speaking, department heads. I work more direct through department heads. Department heads have charge of their employees. And just want to make it clear during any kind of law enforcement investigation, I do not have authority to be interfering in that whatsoever. But I also want to say, our police department has and will always have my support, and I respect them greatly. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Burt. Do we have an estimate time on the school, what was it called?
That personal review?
Thank you.
I received, of course, I sent out an update maybe two weeks ago to the council, I believe. I received, Dave Morrison and I, the finance director, received a draft of the interim report, which is, you know, a progress report. We asked for some corrections on it, some changes. So I hope to have that soon, and I'd be able to share it out publicly very soon. So I'm just waiting on that final version of it.
Thank you.
Councilor Bordalyn?
Oh, thank you. I just got a message from a constituent over the weekend for 875 Buddington Road. I brought this up a couple years ago. There's a drain, large drain, at the end of their property, and there's about a foot high or two feet of weeds, and it's hard for her to get out of the driveway. And then it also overflows because it's so impacted. And then, you know, in fact, in the past, you guys were great. They came out and cleared it down. I don't know if this can just stay on the target list, so it just, they don't have to contact me. It would just be something that's kind of, you know, in the radar to kind of check on from time to time. But I'll send you the pictures as well and email with them.
And I'll have Greg.
And it's right at the end. You can't miss it. It looks like a huge bush. It's on 875 Buddington. Thank you.
Yes, a question for the town manager. The bump track, it almost looks like it's about done.
It's getting very close, but it won't be open until it fences in place.
Ah, yes, they started that today.
Okay, good. That, I believe that's, last I heard, that was the main thing they were waiting on. Because what they don't want is it's wet out, somebody goes on it when they shouldn't and ruin the work on it. But that thing, that project went very swiftly once it started.
I have one other question of curiosity. All this new construction down through the shopping center, a lot of it seems to be sagging. They're lagging behind, and they're just not moving.
I'll have to ask John Reiner what he knows about it.
They almost look as bad as vacant property. I mean, we're trying to make the place look good, and I know it contributes to the grand list, but...
And which plazas are you talking about?
Down through Long Hill Road.
Just generally speaking?
Yes.
I do know, I do know the, is it the Groton Shopping Plaza? Is that the name of Big Wyche Plaza? I forget. I know they have some plans. I don't know where they're at on them. I don't know if any concrete plans coming for the other plaza where the post office is. But I'll find out a little more and give you an update.
These car washes and gas station in particular, one of them just paved their parking lot. The others are prepping to pave, but they've been there for quite a while. We'd like to make the place look a little bit decent.
I'll get some updates.
Thank you.
Councilor Bordalyn?
I forgot one thing, and I'm drawing a blank on the school in the city side, the school that we sold, and now it's under...
120 West?
I'm sorry?
Colonel Ledger?
Yes. Any updates on that?
The last I heard, they are, just to make it clear, they are in compliance with our requirements. They have a permit. Actually, hold on a sec here. The last I heard, I had a little mini update in last week, that the original plan is remove an existing steel deck or replace with a new steel deck and overlay it with concrete. They found the existing roof deck was in better shape than anticipated. The plan is now to use existing deck and have a deeper concrete pore. Mr. Bullock has had a geotech company over the last week or two doing more soil borings to look at that. And then those findings will be sent to a structural engineer. So step by step. After that, the next step would be framing of the building.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I just was asking, and so my follow-up through that is, so when did they have to have a building permit buy, and when did they, because some people are asking.
I don't have it off the top. I sent something to the council. I'd have to pull that up.
I'll look it up and send it to you. I just want to make sure. So the building permit method requirements?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Committee of the whole, the mayor, I'm all set. Personnel and appointments, Chair Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No applicants, no meeting.
Thank you. Chair Parker?
No meeting, no report.
Public Safety, Chair Rusk?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Your question?
For personnel and appointments, I know that seat's been vacant. I had asked to be considered to be put on, since I'm still on no standing committee. And I just wanted to see if there's been any move to move people around or put people on, so that every councillor is serving on a standing committee.
I had also asked if you wanted to be the Chair of the Arts Committee, as well as be on Children's First Committee. I have not received a response from you either.
I did receive a response. I said I wanted to be on a standing committee.
I know, but I had asked you at a meeting, actually, about the Arts Committee and the Children's. You were going to check out, see if you were available during those times.
I said I wouldn't do, I couldn't do those.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Because the Arts Committee, if you remember, you offered that to me first before Councilor Gieske, and I resigned then, and I had asked to be a part of a standing committee. At that time, it was not a standing committee.
Thank you.
So is there any thoughts on personnel appointments?
Actually, yes. After we were done with this section, I was going to announce that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So now that we're done with the committee reports, I would like to make an announcement that I'm going to add. Councilor Good to the Personnel and Appointments Committee, if you would accept that. Mr. Good? Councilor Good? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. On to new business. 2025-266-4, Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority Partnership. This is on page 29 in our packet. Councilor Good, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-266, Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority Partnership. I move that therefore be it resolved that Section 1, the Town Council hereby approves the town joining the authority as a member municipality. Section 2, the town manager is authorized to take or cause to be taken such actions, including, but not limited to, the negotiation and execution of any memorandum of agreement on behalf of the town with the authority, and any other agreements, instruments, and documents that such official deems necessary, appropriate, and desirable to implement the terms of any such memorandum of agreement, and consummate the intention of this and the resolution. So...
Second, Jones? Second by Jones. As a reminder to our community, these are all items that were passed in our committee of the whole meetings, where there was full discussion, people had questions, answers were had. And now what we do is, after they get out of committee and they pass, they come here to our Town Council meeting, and this is where we do our finalization on them. Councilor Bordalyn?
Oh, thank you. So I've been following this pretty closely, because, you know, it's one of those things, it's, how do you reject something when someone says they're going to give money? But also, it's not always about the money. It's about what's best for our town and our environment and our community. These properties, we already have a TIF district, and we're not getting anywhere with that in the sense of, it's, we're not getting any bites. So now we're hoping maybe this will overlay that. And so I just, it's a bit confusing. And I was looking at Fairfield County and many other districts, and I think people see the number, and I'll speak for myself, from what I'm reading, it's like, yep, sounds great, partnership, money's coming. But what does that mean? Like, money is not always the answer. It is definitely important to know the nuts and the bolts. So I have a couple more questions as I've been doing research. As far as planning and zoning goes, through the mayor to the town manager, if in fact a development was to come in, I'm the developer, and I want to do X thing, and X building, and X spot, in this TIF drone that's been sitting bare with nothing for a long time, and my vision doesn't fit the current planning and zoning, by agreeing to this partnership, would that trump or overlay and, you know, would that take precedent over our zoning? Or would it have to then go through zoning? Is zoning going to be forced to change zoning if we agree to this? That's where it's a little gray.
I did read that same article. There was a lot of undue worry about that. It absolutely does not trump our zoning. Everything is guided by our zoning still. Nothing forces the Planning and Zoning Commission to change anything. That's fully under their authority.
Okay. So that's good to know. And then, who is in charge of the developers that these people, like, that, you know, so would Mr. Course and the state and all of them oversee our town staff? Like, how would that partnership, they would be selecting the developers?
No, they're still, they're just providing money ultimately, helping give any experience that we may need of them, and hopefully money if things work out. But no, it'd be just like any other project. If it's a private development, it would go through our normal processes, of course, you know. But we would have access to some funding potentially to do certain things. But no, it still goes through us.
Okay. And then the money is in a pot in our town, and then we funnel it out to the developer? Or does it go from the state right to the developer?
I believe it's a grant, anything would be a grant to us, but I'd have to look at it. That's my understanding. It's grant money.
So who's selecting developers?
It's just private developers doing normal private developer things. They themselves approaching the town.
Okay. And how do you choose to partner with them or not?
Now, if you have a program, let's say you had a pot of money suddenly, like, just like anything else, we might have like Economic Assistance Fund. We advertise that, you know, like, hey, there's money out here for any developers are out there looking to do this type of work, just like we would for any other grant funding, just like we do for CDBG, for work, many other programs.
And the reason I was asking is some people ask me, like, would there be a vetting process? Let's just say, five people own properties that are all in this TIF district, and we're all like, oh my gosh, there's money, let's go. Who's going to be chosen? What's the merit? How is that, you know, you know, how is the Benny's Plaza going to be over something else? Like, where in the application process? Does the council have any...
Point of information?
Your question?
Is this speaking about the Pleasant Alley property or the TIF district?
No.
We're talking about the Benny's Plaza.
The Benny's Plaza. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I heard both coming. That's right.
So, okay. I just want to understand that, so anybody can apply, there's no, is the council supposed to have, like, is it the economic development? Like, who's going to look at these applications and say, wow, that's great for Groton?
I don't know until we get into actually being awarded money. Then we get the parameters of it and set up the design, how the process will work.
Okay. So we approve this, but then we don't know where the council has... Okay, so we approve this, but then we don't know where the council has a say in helping the community determine what they want? That's what I'm wondering. Like, I think it's really important that...
It'll be just like every other grant. It's just a standard grant money. So we'll figure that out once we get awarded by the parameters of the grant. There's nothing special to this other than just making us eligible for money if we want it.
So the state has no oversight on what we do? We can't...
Certainly, if we ask them for their technical expertise, they could give us a recommendation. Then it's up to Planning, Zoning, and other bodies, irrelevant bodies, to do what they want.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess, you know, some people have unfortunately a bad taste in their mouth about how certain things have happened in the past when state involvement's involved, and they're worried about protecting their personal town. And so I'm just trying to ask the questions of, this is money that's going to come in, but we have the control. We have the control to enhance it. We help pick these people and which ones in development, and our planning and zoning still has a part in it.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for answering the questions.
Okay, we're going to take a vote on two zero two five dash two six six dash four. And as a reminder to our community, these were fully discussed out and voted on in committee for them to become, come to the town council for us to pass through this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is two zero two five dash five two one dash five, selection of project concept development team for the former Pleasant Valley School property. This is on page thirty-one. Counselor McBride?
Thank you, two zero two five five two one, selection of project concept development team for the former Pleasant Valley School property. Whereas town council held public hearings on June third, two thousand twenty-five, and July first, two thousand twenty-five, for the sale of the former Pleasant Valley School. And whereas Section nine point six of the Town of Groton Charter requires the sale of all properties with a value of excess of ten thousand dollars to be recommended to the RTM for approval. And whereas the RTM approved the sale of the former Pleasant Valley School at their meeting on July ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby appoints Spinnaker Real Estate Partners as the preferred project concept development team for the former Pleasant Valley School, and authorizes the town manager to finalize terms and legal agreements for the sale of the property, and hereby forwards the preferred concept development team to the RTM for informational purposes.
Second, Pacino.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Borderline?
Thank you. So for me, as a person who is really big about the RFP process, you know, that was a big thing after the Mystic Oral School. I'm happy to see we have a process for the RFP, so I thank everyone who's served on this. I feel as if possibly, you know, it's not the best process, but it is what we have. But I have some questions. So at this point, we're just, at this point, just agreeing through the mayor, through the town manager, we're just agreeing that this is a developer. But at any point, any counselor can back out of this because, as their support, in the sense that we don't know what the RFP fully is going to have in it yet. We don't know what the design's going to look like, if there will be an actually proper playground or not. We don't know what other things they're going to do for environmental protections and changes and making sure that we're looking at our carbon footprint. So right now, as a developer, I could say, yes, I want to be a part of this. But until I see the nuts and the bolts, it's kind of just an empty shell. Is that correct?
You are correct. This is solely authorizing the start negotiations with Spinnakers, the preferred developer. And you have every opportunity to weigh in and eventually vote on any kind of agreement.
All right. So with that, I guess for me, I'm happy that we have a developer. I will support this concept in nature right now as a preferred developer, but I'm interested to see what type of environmental aspects, carbon neutral, looking at ways to make sure we're, you know, building these buildings into the twenty-first century and beyond, but also making sure they're doing things to, like, protect climate in that area. Just because it's a high-dense area doesn't mean build, build, build. Constantly people keep saying, on that side of town, build, build, it's perfect, let's build. And I can agree that it has not been created equal. And as a person who lives on the city side, which is directly aligned with that, my backyard butts up to the town side as I live in the city side by only a couple feet. It is concerning to me because, you know, we need to make sure that we are putting things, it's not just about building, we have to make sure that we can support them. And I constantly hear that we need, you know, however many more homes, but it's one thing to need it, but it's can we support it? Can our demographics, our ground, our environment support the need? And that's what I'm always, when I'm faced with that, it's not just what we need, it's what can we support physically? You know, it's like, I want a bigger house, but I would love to live on the water, but can I afford the flood insurance? You have to be reasonable too. So what is the expectation? So for now, I will vote in favor of this in concept and in theory, but I'm concerned, and I'm going to wait and keep my eye to see the environmental aspects, what this RFP actually has in it, how it's going to benefit District Four, and making sure that there's a park. I personally did ask at one point that a piece of this land possibly be carved out and saved and not sold for the purpose, and unfortunately, I didn't have that support at that time. Now we're looking all over District Four for land, well, we had land. I think it's very vital, putting things in the tax rolls has been a problem way before I got on the council. These things have been sitting, dilapidated forever. It is important to get them back, but it's important to do it in environmentally sound and safe manner. Thank you.
Counselor Russk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to apologize to Counselor Borderline. I accidentally hit my watch and called the city police, so my apologies for the interruption. I also do still have concerns about this. I will vote in favor of this tonight as well. But there are some big concerns, not with Spinnaker, but with the overall concept. So that's where I stay for now. Thank you. I will say...
Counselor Borderline's right.
Everything, I've said this before, things tend to go on the west side of town, and we have a lot of development on the west side of town. And I think that it is something that needs to be considered in the future. I'm excited about the concept of other areas potentially being available, but I am concerned. Thank you.
Counselor Borderline?
Thank you. You know, we just had the big Triton Square, whatever it's called, in the corner there, right behind the Chinese food restaurant and the Super Eight motel. How much development can that area really support? Again, another concern of mine, and it's something I've always spoke up with, is the fact of affordable housing. I mean, these developments, it's one thing to say we need all these thousands of homes, but can people afford twenty-five hundred, twenty-two hundred? I mean, people are having to stuff two and three people in a bedroom because they just can't afford to really house themselves. And everyone keeps saying, well, when we do this, it's going to open the floodgates, and people are going to miraculously move out of their houses, and there's going to be more room elsewhere for other people. I don't see that happen. I'll tell you right now, as I'm aging, my house will be paid off. I don't think I'm going to leave my house because it's going to be the cheapest thing possible because these other things are just too unaffordable. And they don't have the open space and the land for the children and the pets and just tranquility. My other concern is, as we look at our climate, the heat is rising. I don't know about your electric bill this summer, but I'm trying to keep cool with my medical conditions, and I am spending a lot. And so I have concerns as we add more buildings and more structures. What is this doing to our animals, our environments? You know, it's not about just the need. There's land everywhere. Other towns can build. I want people here, but we have to be careful not to max ourselves out and also have to keep in consideration, build more, grow more? Yeah, and I'll speak for myself, as a supporter of education, we better be prepared to pay more because you're going to have to pay more to help support that. So with that, and that's thinking down the line, as we clear out these houses that we keep talking about and moving people into these apartments, more families will move in, and our schools are going to have to grow as a result. I am nervous. I am scared for what this looks like. And again, on the city side, which brings into the largest income that buds up to District Four, District Three, District Two, where all of our money comes in, all of our tax-based large numbers. We're already taking the heat with the industrial revolution over there. It's great. We're so proud of EB and Pfizer and the naval base, as a proud Navy mom and former spouse, and my in-laws are also retired veterans. It's not, it's great, but it comes at a cost when you live that close to it environmentally. So adding more structure isn't going to make people necessarily want to live in Groton. We have other things we need to do to enhance them, and there's some other things, like updating certain aspects of our community that we need to work on, that should be wondering. And our schools. I talk to people every day, and I'm like, whoa, you moved in, your military family moving back, old friends. Where are you going? East Line, Old Line. Why aren't they coming here? It's not the housing. They're going to smaller towns. They're going for the higher scores in schools where the money is invested individually into every children equitably. And that is my concern, and our sports complex is outdated. So I have concerns. So actually, I may abstain from this and wait to see where this goes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Good?
Yes, thank you. I just want to voice my support of the project and Spinnaker. Being a renter, twenty-five hundred dollar a month rent is not very unusual in the town of Groton right now. Almost every apartment complex is over ninety percent full, and the market rate calculation in every one of those apartments is when you're over ninety-two percent full, you raise the rent. We need more apartments. That's it. Thanks.
All right, I just want to remind the people at home, we've had full discussions in the committee of the whole meetings, and this is where we passed it and voted on it there to come to the town council so we could pass it. And typically, we have, we'd have discussions here if new information comes forward. But it seems like we're having full-on discussions this evening, and we do not have our directors here either to answer any questions. But it was notated in our committee of the whole meeting that Groton needs sixty-five more housing units. In Groton, supply and demand, move the market, an electric boat is hiring large numbers of people year over year. I do not see relief in sight for renters unless supply and demand is met. So I will be supporting this.
Point of information?
Your question.
How many houses do we need?
It said, they've been saying about sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred new...
Housing units.
Is that counting apartments?
I am not the director, and he's not here. This is why we ask those questions in committee of the whole.
Well, other towns actually bring them to both meetings, so that's possible as well.
I don't know about that.
Okay. We're allowed to ask questions?
You are. So I want to take a vote on two zero two five dash five two one dash five, selection of project concept development team for the former Pleasant Valley School property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That passes eight to one to zero with Borderline abstaining, I mean opposed. Up next, two zero two five dash five one nine dash four, landfill solar lease. Counselor Jones, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-two-five dash five one nine landfill solar lease. Resolve that the town council authorizes the town manager or his designate to execute any and all documents related to the twenty-year lease agreement and tax agreement, as well as other documents related to the design, installation, and operation of the five megawatt-ac slash six-point-six megawatt dac solar facility. So move.
Second. Moved by Jones, seconded by Russk.
Counselor Borderline? Yep. So again, this is definitely something I'm in support of as far as making sure we're looking at options, and I think having that land there and putting this on is a great option because it's not usable land. Very familiar with this, as my father-in-law lives in Montville, and I've seen that go up, and it seems to be pretty successful, because I'm sure my father-in-law would complain if it was not. With that being said, I also feel like as we bring in new revenue in our town, it's great, we get all excited. Yes, we got a thing, but we never know as a council where exactly is that money going? We already, we've already pretty much, like, each year we vote on our taxes and where departments are going. And so as new revenue is coming in that's helping to offset taxes, there's other needs in our community, and it's great when you have an initiative like this, especially when people are complaining about our sports fields. And so I did put a referral in. I believe I got a couple similar...
Counselor Borderline, the topic on the floor is the landfill solar lease. It is not about the revenues and where it may be going. Your referral has been accepted, and that will be on a future agenda. Please stay to the topic on the agenda, which is the actual lease of the solar field.
Absolutely, and it says it in here, which I have every right to say. It says town annually will get two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. I'm talking about the monies that are coming in that are in this discussion package. And I want to make sure that that money, or a percent of that money, is going back to help people with high solar bills.
We are not discussing where the money will be used. We are talking about the actual lease. It does encompass the amount we will receive, but not how we will spend it. So would you please stay to the lease itself?
So the lease itself is very vital.
The lease does not talk about how we, as a community, spend the money.
But it is important. So with that being said, as revenues come in, in this amount, I will be watching to make sure that this money is going to be allocated, hopefully to sports fields and some solar renewal.
Counselor Borderline, this is my third time asking you not to discuss something that's not on the agenda. Thank you. You are out of order.
Sure, thank you. Just hold everyone to the same standard too when they're out of order, please.
You are out of order for the second time. You are not recognized. You do not have the floor.
I just asked for the same grade.
For the third time, you are out of order. We are now taking our recess.
Sure, I'd love a break.
Ten minutes, it's seven fifty-six.
When everyone else is up...
All right, it is 7:13, I mean, 8:13. We're back from a recess. I'd like to reiterate things that I've said at previous meetings. FOI violations are discussing topics that are not on our agenda is a FOI violation. So let's please keep our comments to the topic at hand. Would anybody else like to speak on this note? All right, we're going to take a vote on 2025-519-4, landfill solar lease. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2024-574-4, 517-529 Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. This is on page 35 of our packet. Councilor Russk, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-574, 517 to 529 Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. Resolution to extend the option to purchase agreement for six months for the sale of the 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway property, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign all required documentation to finalize the sale of 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway property. Resolve that the Town Council hereby authorizes the six-month extension request for the option to purchase agreement to March 15, 2026, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign all applicable documents and agreements required for the closing of the property. So moved?
Second. Moved by Russk, seconded by Parker. Councilor Merritt.
Yes, just to refresh my memory, is this the old Chitucket Plumbing Park property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Bordaline.
Thank you. I think I asked my questions at the last meeting, but just to reiterate and make sure, I think the extension is obviously needed. I just get concerned, as other properties, we've done a lot of extensions and got a lot of criticism on, and then they fall through. So I'm just hopeful and positive that this is just going to be a minor, just, you know, extension that's needed, and it moves forward, and all goes well.
All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2024-574-4, 517-529 Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-671-1 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, FY26. Councilor Pacino, this is on page 37. Would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Item 2025-671 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, FY26. Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program Grant. Resolve that the Town Council authorizes Town Manager John Burt to execute any and all documents and perform all acts and things deemed necessary for the appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program. To accept the grant in a sum of $100,000, and to refer the item to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Bordaline. All right, we're not seeing any hands, so we're going to take a vote on 2025-671-1 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, FY26. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-686-1 Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. I will be recusing myself from this one. Since it's already been sent to the Town Council from the committee, and there's been full discussion on it, I will run the meeting, but I will not participate in any discussions. Councilor Merritt, would you like to take this one? It's on page 38, with a resolution on page 39.
Thank you. Item 2025-686 Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. Resolve that the Town Council approves of the local option beginning with the 2025 Grand List, FYE 2027 Property Tax Exemption for eligible surviving spouses.
Second. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Good. Councilor Bordaline.
Again, this affects a small portion of our community, but should it be a large portion? I think it's still just as viable to have, and very important. I think when you talk about the sacrifices that it takes to get this type of money, we're not talking, you know, I mean, we're talking serious disabilities and/or death. So I just think that these spouses should be taken care of. I ask my questions about making sure what defines a spouse in our day and age, you know, same-sex marriage is legal in our state. So making sure that everybody has fair, equal access to this benefit. As well as, I did ask the question about, you know, common law, but it was stated, if I remember correctly, that it's not recognized. Is that through the mayor, through the Town Manager?
Right. Connecticut does not recognize common law marriages, other than if it's recognized in another state and you move here.
Okay.
Then it continues to be recognized.
Perfect. So just want to thank the families, and hope that no one ever has to exercise this benefit, but for those who need it, I'm glad it's there.
I'm not seeing any other hands. We'll take a vote on 2025-686-1 Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero with one recusal. Franco. Up next, 2025-635-2 Bond Ordinance for Design and Construction of Groton Athletic Fields. This is on page 40. And I'll take this one.
Okay, good.
Okay, good. Two zero two five dash six three five Bond Ordinance for Design and Construction of Groton Athletic Fields. Resolution adopting the ordinance appropriating one fourteen million three hundred and eighty thousand for the design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. Resolved that the Groton Town Council adopts the ordinance appropriating fourteen million three hundred and eighty thousand for the design and construction of the Groton Athletic Fields, consisting of athletic field improvements primarily at the Fitch High School, and if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and the notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation, and be it further resolved that the first sentence of Section One of the ordinance be revised to read "Section One: That the sum of fourteen million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is appropriated for costs related to the design and construction of the athletic field improvements primarily at Fitch High School, and if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School," the project is in quotes, "and be it further resolved that the ordinance is recommended to the representative town meeting per Rule six point five point three, and be it further resolved that in accordance with Section five point five point two, I mean, six point two of the town charter directs that the notice of adoption of the aforesaid ordinance contained a description of the ordinance prepared by the town attorney in lieu of the complete text of the ordinance. I so move."
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Rusk.
Councilor Bordalyn?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to thank the Athletics Field Task Force as a person who served on their way at the beginning before, I don't know, five, six years ago, who knows? It seems quite a while ago. And it was a bunch of people that, you know, would come up to me in the town for different various reasons, asking why our fields were in disarray, and why has there been no money ever allocated from the town. As I stated, the person graduated from Fitch in nineteen ninety-eight. That field looks exactly the way it is, has it always been since I was there. Unfortunately, we have grown, and we have the financial means, and then for some reason in our town, the money has not been annually appropriated to keep up with the time. The restrooms I consider deplorable, not really ABA compliant. The bleachers are not ABA compliant. I had hoped to see all this project be approved, even though it was going to be a phased-in approach possibly, meaning we would fund it, you know, but I wanted to see that we approved it all. We didn't get that, but we have this, and so this is something that's a start. I wish that we had, because approving just this doesn't mean the other steps are going to be approved down the line. I just want the community to be clear that this is a piece of the puzzle, it's not the whole puzzle, so it's going to be a many-step process along the way. But it's better than what we got before, it's not what I wanted originally. I wanted the whole concept to be approved, and then to be phased in over time. But I wanted to leave here saying, "We approved all of the athletic fields," and put the stamp on it and close it, and then allow it to go out accordingly, and let the voters choose on that. I feel it shouldn't be just the nine of us, in my opinion. I think the voters have a huge stake and tax into this, and if they want it in, let's let them vote it in. But, here we are. I do have concerns about the language or question. I can appreciate that this fourteen thousand says it should go to this, but overwhelmingly, the community had spoke about wanting Fitch done first. So if our primary goal is Fitch, if there's any extra, wouldn't that money extra go into the other phases of Fitch versus funneling it out to Sutton Park and all of that? I just wanted to be clear through the mayor, through the town manager.
It allows for any which way you want with that. It could be just for further Fitch, but let's say you only had two hundred thousand left, and it really didn't accomplish anything at Fitch, or you might want to do this off-ball field upgrade at the middle school. So it just gives you flexibility. Now, the council can choose to narrow that down for the actual question, this does not bind you to this. You'll have another chance to dictate exactly what it says.
Yeah, because I think that's where I'm going. I think in this first phase, if there's any leftover funds, it should stay at Fitch, because there's still, if I remember, I don't have it in front of me, there's still like one or two more phases to really do the full vision of doing all the complexes at Fitch in its entirety. Because this concept does not do the extra field and many other things. I mean, originally, at one point when it came before us, the bathrooms weren't included, now they are. But, I mean, it's been a long haul, and this is definitely not what, like I stated, what I would have wanted, but I'm going to accept it in principle, because some improvements is better than nothing. But I hope the future council and community will support the phased-in of other facilities down the road. So I'm hopeful, I'm excited. I do think when we're talking about building apartments and needing all these housing, if we don't update our school, it ain't attractable. If you're not putting the money into the students and to the fields, why pick Groton? Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as I've stated before, I will be voting no again. I'd rather have seen it go to another spot so that it was benefiting all of Groton, but I'm not comfortable with bonding right now. But this is going out to the voters in majority rules. But again, I will be voting no, because I still think we could have put this towards another building to do other things with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Thank you, I'm in support of this. I just have a question for this council to consider or think about. Because I'm reading this, and this is what's going to go to the public, right? They're going to see, at least my perception is, they're going to see fifteen million dollars, and it's going to say athletic field improvements, and it's really athletic field and other related infrastructure improvements, right? Is it, because it's not, I mean, I'm just thinking, if I were to look at fifteen million dollars for athletic field improvements, I'm thinking it's just fields, but that's not what this is.
Well, Councilor McBride, the wording can be, will be shaped as to how it will go out to referendum at a later time.
Okay, so there'll be other?
Yes, the council will form the question, but as well as the explanatory texts that go out there with it.
Okay, so this isn't what, people are going to say fourteen million for fields?
No, this is just the authorization to take the next step.
Okay, okay, thank you for the explanation, I'm good.
Councilor Bordalyn?
I just probably should just piggyback, you know, and maybe, because something was said, and it's, everyone has their own opinion, and I respect it, honestly. But my vote for this is, it is for everybody. The Fitch High School fields, if you look at other towns, they are allowed to have concerts, and they have marching band competition tournaments, and other tournaments and things. We could be using that field. Some towns do fundraising where they invite like a pretty kind of cool concert band person to come, and they perform on the field, and you have all the seating there, and you can like take tickets and bring people in from other areas. There's so much more you can do, but our fields are not really up to snuff, they're not very inviting in comparison to our towns. And I'm not going to debate the turf versus the synthetic, because that's a whole other topic. At this point, I just want something. Like, I really just, you know, want these improvements, and looking, again, you know, I'm very open about it, you know, as a person who struggled with battling cancer, there were times I was there trying to support my kids over the years, and I couldn't even use the bathrooms there, because sometimes the old bathrooms are locked, and they had to pour the potty out. We make way too much money in this town to be having our fields look the way that they do. It's time to update them, our children deserve better, our community. Parents can't sit in the stands with their families at graduation or any of the other events, they can't, you know, be present. So this is not just a, oh, this is like a nicety. This is a must-have. It's time to be ABA compliant. It is time to say that we want to welcome people, and when people look at the town, they look at our complexes. And from, not just from, do you have children in school, but from a need standpoint from the community. I'd love to see more enrichment, more events be sponsored there, which brings in revenues, right? We want to attract people to our town to spend. Well, you got to have a place to go, and there's no here or there in Groton, from the city side over, because the city doesn't have a complex sport field, they have Washington Park, but there's nothing with stands and everything like that. So it's important to have this. So, again, it's a step forward, and I think this is something the town can get around. Hopefully, we'll get some donors from the community perhaps, maybe there'll be some outreach, so I guess through the mayor, through the town manager. Are we looking, because I talked to other towns, they do a lot of outreach with their big developers in the area, and again, I think we shouldn't be afraid to do that. So will there be any other outreach to ask to see if there's any partnerships or people willing to help support?
There's not been talk of that yet. Parks and Rec is taking on the outreach for Paquonic Plains Park for the tricentennial playground redo, which is well over a million. So that's their focus, but certainly something I could see the AD at the schools maybe leading up.
Well, hopefully, and the same thing with Paquonic Plains, as we build things, we have to remember like the pump tracks, and this and that, what we build is going to need repair, so we shouldn't wait until the twentieth, the thirtieth year to say, "Oh, it's awful." We should have a plan, and that's something we should be talking about in our budget sessions, about how are we looking at our infrastructure?
Councilor Bordalyn, can you stay on topic of the construction bond ordinance?
Yeah, looking at the money, the bonds, making sure that we're preparing so that we don't leave all this critical stuff to the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason why I stated the way I stated my statement is so I don't get in trouble with FOI. When I first got on, we talked about another building being updated for all of Groton to be used. We have groups who do not have a place to go. Right now, we have athletic fields. There are people, for instance, the performing arts group.
Councilor Parker, would you stay on topic of the construction of the athletic fields bond ordinance?
Again, correct, is why I didn't want to do it that way. But there are other groups that would like an opportunity. So the athletic fields is one section of town, we have other things that could be expanded on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Merritt?
Yes, I'd like to register in on the reconstruction of the athletic fields at Fitch. I think it's well overdue, and we can argue this all night, and we can come up with all of the alternatives for the money, and then we're right back where we started seven fifteen years ago. And I've talked to people on the task force, and that's why some of them aren't there anymore, because we just keep moving this on and moving it on. And I will vote yes for the project, as it is. I remind the council that the wording was changed to include the extra money into other projects related to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take a quick turn. I wanted to answer one question that I heard was asked, what if there's money left over, why, it could, we should put it in here that it could be used at Fitch? The thing is, if it's used at Fitch, there would, and there was some money left over from phase one, they could start whatever other phase that Fitch was, and there would be no money left over to use anywhere else. It would still all be used primarily at Fitch. So I think that's sort of covered in the way it's written. And as was another councilor had said, we can work on the wording later on, this is the first step. I have been with working on athletic fields for Groton before the Athletic Field Commission. I have been pushing for these things. I have been a big champion of this. I am happy to say that this is basically a master plan with the different, there are, it lays out something for future councils, and I think step one is, with the fourteen million, is wonderful, because this would be offset and would not really increase taxes, and the way I see it, because we have other bonds going down, and if we bring this one up, it sort of balances it out so that there would be no tax increase. That should be the messaging. This is not basically a tax increase for our community because of the bond situation. And we've had those full discussions in our COW meetings. This is what our council has brought forward, and as been stated, it was the will of the council to bring this to our town council and to move forward with the bonding. It will go to the RTM next, where a full body would be having discussions on this, and they will have their say on it. I am very proud of this. I am very happy that it has finally come to fruition where it is before us, and we are at this step. So with that, I have seen no other hands. We're going to take a vote on two zero two five dash six three five dash two Bond Ordinance for the Design and Construction of the Groton Athletic Fields, and I will happily vote yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions. That passes eight to one to zero with Parker. Opposed. Up next, two zero two five dash six eight three dash one National Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. This is on page forty-one. Councilor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a resolution to become a participating subdivision in a new national opioid settlement. Resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager to sign the necessary forms to become a participating subdivision in any new opioid distribution settlements. I so move.
Second? Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalyn.
Maybe this is, again, a no-brainer. I mean, why wouldn't you, right? Like, why wouldn't you want to take advantage of this opportunities that is being presented for us? And at a later date, then we will discuss, I'm assuming, how these monies will be spent in our processes at councilor, is that correct?
Yes, that'll be coming up on our future agenda.
So yeah, this is simply just saying that we acknowledge that there's an issue, and that our town is, you know, definitely a part of that as well that suffered, and we should get some type of money back to support our community in that manner. So full support of it. It's unfortunate that we need it. It's sad that these companies, well, this epidemic of illness and addiction is definitely a concern that's affecting every town. So I think I'm happy that we can get some monies in, and hopefully we can use them for the greater good to help our community.
All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on two zero two five dash six eight three dash one National Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Bordalyn.
Second.
Seconded by Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. It is eight thirty-seven, and we are adjourned. Drive safe, everyone.